All right, it is 5:30, so we will call the first public hearing to order. This public hearing is the, um, public hearing for lease agreement with bright beginnings. First order of business, we'd have to approve this agenda. Okay. So I guess we will open it up to the public for anybody that wants to speak on the agreement with bright beginnings. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn that first public hearing.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. I will then call the, well, wait a minute, yep, it's 5:32. I will then call the second public hearing to order. This public hearing is for the public to, um, give us their input on the proposed changes to the 22-23 district calendar. I do have one letter here that need, that would like to be, the patron would like it to be read at the public hearing. Thank you for reading this letter on behalf, in my absence as I am attending a junior high basketball game and could not represent this concern in person. When I evaluated to the options that were presented in an email regarding making up days due to inclement weather, I was disheartened that our teachers vetoed the option of capturing two missed days by electing not to work Presidents' Day Monday and the Monday following Easter. As other local schools implemented making up these two days without option and eliminating early out on Wednesdays sooner, I am opposing to lengthening the school day by 30 minutes for the students that use bus transportation. Some of these kids will be getting on the bus before 7:00 a.m. and returning home close to 4:30 p.m. or later. Reminder, this would apply to a lot of our elementary-aged kids. Classroom fatigue and disengagement could be a problem as students will be required to attend school longer each day. Unsure if any more learning will be accomplished with longer periods due to lesson being designed for a certain amount of minutes in each period under normal circumstances. Just because a class time was lengthened, will the student gain any more learning? How is this going to affect students involved in after-school activities with practices running later and away competitions? Examples, students dismissed early for a sporting event, missed class time on a normal school day, now they will miss even more. When making your decision, I hope that you take in consideration that this change is for the balance of the school year and not a short-term remedy. I feel that there are students still struggling academically from loss of time due to COVID shutdown. Is this going to benefit our students, or is it only a means to reach the 1080 number? Respectfully, Jody Kruger. All right, any other public input? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn the second public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same, motion carried. And Greg did send me a text saying that he's helping out in the, with the junior high basketball game, he would be here as soon as he could. All right. 5:35, we're good, aren't we?
5:32.
5:32, okay. So I will call, uh, to order the regular school board meeting. First order on the agenda is the approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same, motion carries. Going down to the five school board basics, I'm sorry, I do not have that in front of me right now. If somebody could pull that up and read those, I would appreciate it.
First, put students first. Second, follow the law and your own policy. Third, respect the chain of command. Fourth, base decisions on shared objective information. And five, operate on the public path.
Okay, thank you, Laurel. Next item, item three, approval of our consent agenda items.
There's just a few more invoices on the handout that I gave you. So we're moving on to the moment where the bigger ones.
Anybody have any comments, questions on those? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. All right, moving down to visitors, public forum, we have two individuals that would like to speak. I'll remind you that there, you have three minutes. First person, Tom Taylor, representing the public, and subject in which to speak is Tom, whenever you're ready.
All right. Hello, guys, it's me again. I was really hoping just maybe you guys would not have to hear from me again for a while. I mean, really, the state agreed up with my assessment that the October meeting was done. We turned around, agreed between myself, the district, and the state board on a resolution. The resolution had us sitting here, not, but eight weeks ago, having to go through the process of an agenda and how to conduct a meeting. After the very next meeting, after the December meeting, we have a resignation in our district. I'm not here to discuss those items, but what I am here to discuss is, the individual resigns on Monday, January 16th, the same day of the meeting. I go out, check the agenda, and see this resignation on the agenda. How? How is this even possible? You have to give 24-hour notice, and we just had a meeting on this. I send an email to the board, and Mr. Craig, Mr. Craig acknowledges, takes it off the agenda. We have a 24-hour period to have anything posted on the agenda. These same slight tactics were used back in October again, just a couple months later. So why is, as a patron and a parent of this district, I'm having to put in the time babysitting the superintendent and the president to make sure things are properly done? Why can they not just do the job to the letter of the law that is stated and then to follow? I'm seriously about to submit the time to the board to approve for me to get paid for all the babysitting I've been doing. But, by the way, again, I'm just a patron. I have very limited access to what goes on in the district behind the doors. But if they're willing to cut corners and manipulate on a monthly public meeting, what is happening to the items that are, that I'm not privileged to, or the rest of us aren't? Mr. Craig and Mr. Grine, can you please do your jobs? Mr. Craig states, all we are is negative, and we need to focus on the positive. If you did your job and give me something else to focus my attention on, rather than being lied to and manipulated to every month, then maybe I would have something positive to look forward to. Please do the jobs we've asked you guys to do and hired you to do, or please leave. That'll be positive for me.
Thank you. Second up, Amber Taylor, representing the teachers, um, subject is Labor Relations Committee.
Well, okay, I just want to let it go. Um, hello, my name is Amber Taylor. I am an aide at the Esso Elementary School. I'm not just here for myself today, but I'm here for some that didn't feel comfortable enough to speak out, or couldn't be here today because of other obligations. I am on the Labor Relations Committee. We meet, we met last Tuesday, February 7th. This committee has been a blessing for so many reasons, so I do not want this to be a negative hype on that, because it has been wonderful to address physical things that needed attention. At Tuesday's meeting, I brought up that we have been approached by staff asking when the interview committee, from last May, 24th, 25th, were going to meet again to go over feedback. And just a little background, last May, 25th, when the interview committee met with Mr. Craig, it was a request that we gather again to see how things are going and go over feedback, and Mr. Craig agreed. Both Paula Beltman and Ally Pepe, Ally Pepe was on the interview committee with myself too, and also on the labor relations, Paula's on the labor relations committee, said that they too have been approached by multiple staff asking when this meeting was happening. When asked to collaborate, what details, Mr. Craig responded in a harsh and aggressive way, putting down staff and community, saying some very unprofessional things. Things like, "That's for the next guy. If I was gonna be here, I care more. No one even wants to come to Sibley." I feel that all the staff here is held at a very high standard to deal with students, parents, other staff, and administration. So I believe that administration should be held to that same sort of high standard to talk to their own staff. I've been using kind of a, as a district, as a person that works for the district, as a person that has kids that come here, the person that went to school here, I want to see this district do amazing things, and be something so unbelievably amazing that other districts are going, "What are you doing there? Your staff is, is growing, it's amazing, your, the, the parents, the people there, it's all good." And I want that. And I've, I feel like we need to get better at communicating and being more open and being more, the door is there, and come through it, and answer question, ask questions, do that sort of thing. I've been using this a lot lately of, when a country is at war, they don't just assume what the people on the ground need. They don't just go, "Well, today I think they need food, or today I think they need air supply, so let's send it over." Like, they literally talk to the people, literally, in the trenches, where that came from, in the trenches, to find out what they need, what concerns they have, what sort of things make the, the engine run better. And I feel like we need to get back to that. We need to get back to a point where people can openly discuss things, but when they're met with wall, are met with aggression, or anger, or feel like they can't speak, it shuts everything down. And it makes staff that's angry, resentful, hard to be there, oh, sorry, hard to be there, and it just doesn't make things easy. And so, that is all I have, and once again, thank you for doing what you do. I know this is not an easy job. I know it's not.
Thank you, Amber. All right, moving on to administrative reports, principles, Mr. DeZale.
Yeah, so you can see, my report is listed in the, uh, posted agenda. Very proud of the continued work that our staff and students are continuing to do. The FAST test showed some great growth in our literacy, um, and the I-Ready tests showed some great growth in our math. A couple of statements about the I-Ready, the K-6 math, um, attachment that's on there, you kind of have to read it in three-column chunks, um, and so, by grade level, what I was looking for was, um, the first column, the first three columns are for the fall diagnostic, the next three columns are for the winter diagnostic, and so I was comparing grade levels. So, if I just look at kindergarten right now, um, there was 4% of our students that took the diagnostic for math on or above grade level, that's now raised up to 42%. So that's kind of how you kind of have to go back and forth between those. And so as you compare those numbers, you can see those percentages shifting to that on or above grade level from either below or two grade levels below. Um, and so, very proud of the work that our staff continues to do there. The literacy, FAST literacy data, um, as you can see, we are, um, not where we want to be, or not where we need to be, but above the Northwest AEA and the Iowa Department of State numbers, and so, um, we're continuing to work, we're continuing to, um, try and push kids to meet those, um, meet those percentages and meet those benchmarks, so. Um, the professional development for the last month was focused a lot on our curriculum. Um, I'd like to pay special attention to the dates of January 23 and 24. We had our Amplify representative in, doing some coaching sessions. Uh, the feedback I got on those was very, very positive, and, um, felt like we can maybe even look into something like that in the future. So, we're using some of the documentation that we got from that, uh, coach to continue to, um, improve and to continue to highlight what's going well.
Any comments, questions for Kent?
Um, as far as the Amplify, I made a few visits into the middle school and elementary in the, since our last meeting, and it was good to see the interaction, the kids just being involved in, I, I was just really happy to see it, and when I visited with the teachers, they had good things to say, so, it was cool.
It's fun to see the, the complete engagement.
Yeah.
I mean, how, how much the kids, there was some apprehension on the subjects and some of those kind of things, but Amplify is very research-based, and they sell a ton of curriculum, and it's, it's held our kids' attention better than what we may be anticipating, and it's been, it's been a great thing.
Yeah, it really engages them, and engages them all, and I just, the teachers and keeping everybody in the classroom participating was good to see.
Yeah, I would echo that. Kristin and I went in a couple of days together and, and visited some rooms, and that was really impressive to me. The kids knew what to do, where to be, um, they were excited by what they were doing, they were very engaged, and that was really cool to see. So they are, they're doing great work.
Mm-hmm.
Very much so, yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Great to hear of different successes going on.
The other thing we noticed was, one of the classrooms we visited in fourth grade, it was, we really liked seeing and, and talking with, um, the teachers that were in the room because they fully had integrated the special ed kids into the classroom, and to hear that they were answering questions, um, that was cool. And the, the teacher said, some of, some of her kids that are on her caseload, um, were scoring very high and doing great on some of the assessments they were doing. So that was really, we were excited to see that, too. That, and that was in social studies.
Any other comments, questions? All right, thanks, Kent. Moving on to Mr. DeZale.
Yeah, at the middle school, the middle school, things are busy, um, wrapping up our winter seasons here, in, in one sense, and getting ready for the spring. Group speech, jazz choir, jazz band are just a few of the events that have performed recently. Um, we're also entering the postseason for a lot of the winter sports activities, and I won't steal the recognition of excellence, thunder, we'll let Avery read that in a little bit, but there's a lot of things happening with all our varsity sports teams now, right here in the postseason. Um, the PD, so, last week, Wednesday, if you remember at the beginning of the year, we talked about, we have the mentor mentees, some of them are on that cycle, and we had different tracks we talked about at the beginning of the year. Um, one of the tracks are those that were in the book study, um, they're not working on new curriculum, or those that we had approved on that, but they were in the book study, and then they'll work on an individualized PD plan, while the lady from Mississippi Bend did a training with them and talked about how they can kind of individualize online and go through some different modules for those that are in that track, and show them how to do that. So that, that was, for those that are in that specific PD route, um, very beneficial, and I think that's something we can use moving forward for them. On the 24th, what Kent just talked about here, um, we had Amplify, so at the middle school, they call elementary CKL.
Yep.
CKLA?
Yeah.
Not as familiar with that one, but the middle school, what they officially call it Amplify. And so, they were here in the middle school for one day, um, great feedback, and if I could sum it up in, in a phrase, when I was walking her out, uh, at the end of the day, she made the comment to me that she does this enough, she can tell, because we had a question and answer with admin, me and Katie, and I don't remember who was in there, and then with the teachers as well, and she said, based on their questions, she can always tell when staff fakes having tried to implement it, or haven't fully got into it, and versus when they really have gone into it with fidelity and dug deep, based on the type of questions, because there's things you can only answer once you've gone in it. And she goes, "Your staff has done that." So, that's how I sum that up, so that was, that was really good to hear. Interventions, we've continued with our intervention schedule, I did put the attachment. The biggest thing, and Kent highlighted that, I think, talking about, our goal is to have at least 80%, and yeah, at the middle school, and overall, we're below that, but comparatively with the AEA and, and the state, you can see we're ahead of that, so I, I guess I point that out as a positive. And then I won't get into the other data, but kind of shows more of the specific intervention and things that they've been doing down there, and gives you an idea of some of the progress our middle school students have made. And then with attendance, and the other board goals, PD goals, you can see that at the bottom, and you will see that January is much better, again, when we have staff returning from absences, from maternity leaves and sickness and so forth, so it's good to see people back in the building.
All right. Any comments, questions for? Did I stand each other?
Yeah.
Because I just kind of scrolled through.
Yeah, you did.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Mr. Craig.
Uh, in addition to my posted report, we did get the updated condition of education report from the state, and we'll have, uh, we'll have a significant amount of data to share with you, um, at the March meeting from that, uh, report.
Any comments, questions for Mr. Craig? All right, um, moving on to item C, board committees.
Uh, the committees did not meet this month, but the finance committee will need to get back together to talk about negotiations soon.
All right. Moving on to recognition of excellence.
Uh, fifth grade student Ryan Munoz Hernandez was a winner of I Love America Because essay contest sponsored by WMF, Allard, VFW Auxiliary Post 7373, Sibley. Ryan won the local contest and was entered into the state contest. He did not place at state. Ryan's essay is attached. Last week was National School Counseling Week, thanks to Mrs. Earl, Mrs. Jensen, and Mrs. Klingenberg for all they do to help students with their academic and social slash behavioral needs. Dawson Byer placed second at district wrestling at the 138-pound weight class and qualified for the Iowa High School Athletic Association State Wrestling Tournament. He will be representing Sibley O'Cheaton this week at the state wrestling tournament.
Okay, thank you, Ava. Moving on to item E, IASB update, um, they're actively involved in getting SSA and promoting SSA. Um, the Senate, I believe, came in at 2%, the House came in at 3%, is that correct?
Yes, and Governor signed it.
Okay. So, that's a positive. Discussion items, literacy goals presentation, elementary literacy. Maria Mans is here for the secondary English Language Arts to present.
I'm 712.
What did I say?
You have elementary, but it's, I'm secondary.
Oh.
Literacy, yeah.
Sorry.
I'm 712, so.
Okay.
Well, yours are stealing my stuff, talking about the new curriculum. I almost just jumped in. So, it is going well, which we were kind of nervous about, we didn't know how being all online would be for students. They do kind of get sick of it at times, of reading all online, so we are looking at adding in some novel units, but the online curriculum has novel guides to help with that, so that's really exciting that it can still work with that, but give them a little bit of a break from reading on the screen all day long. So we'll look at this semester adding more of that in. As, just some data, the A reading test students have to take, they take it in the fall, winter, and spring. Forty-nine of the eighth graders who took the test, 29 showed growth, 41 were proficient or exceeding proficiency, and four of the eight who are not proficient, show growth. So, we're really excited it's showing they are improving, and especially that test, tests strictly writing, but we've actually noticed a lot of great gains in, in writing, or that test's reading, and it, it gives a lot of growth in, in writing, so we're really excited about that, so. Just some positives, we're kind of waiting to see, um, a true test of growth, maybe year three. Year one, we're kind of figuring it out, so then year two to year three, we can actually truly compare and see how well they really are improving, but just from that one test alone, we've already seen growth, so that's really exciting to see. And I just really want to praise Renee Schmidt. This year, we started off kind of rough in the fall, we were down a teacher, and she took charge, and she did one and a half grades, which was amazing, and we had Heather Klein Walterink come in, and she did half the seventh grade, and then at Christmas time, she took over and did full-time, so we're now fully staffed this semester, so that was really exciting, but I just want to give a really big shout-out to Renee, she worked a ton of extra hours, not only was it all new curriculum, but then she was doing a grade and a half, so I really just want to praise Renee and, um, say what a good job she did, and really thank her for that, so, yeah. That's really what I had. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I was one of the Zorn maternity, so I may or may not be able to talk.
Thank you very much. All right, item B, certified budget, setting tax rates.
Okay, so as we get close to the time of year where we set our certified budget, it's always a good reminder for the board to go through what, um, how we get to that determination with the, with property tax rate, uh, but also with some new legislation and, and how things may be a little different this year. So, uh, some things to know, there are seven, seven different levies that a school district can take advantage of to generate funds for different purposes. Sibley O'Cheaton uses four of these levies, um, for the general fund, which is set by the uniform levy and the district cost per pupil, the management fund, which pays, uh, we'll, we'll get into that in a second, uh, pebble, and then the voted pebble. Um, so just a reminder that the property tax levy is the amount charged per $1,000 evaluation to property owners, so this year, our tax rate was 10.46?
Yes.
10.46, um, so that means for every $1,000 evaluation, $10.46 is charged. So if you have a $100,000 home, you would have 100 times 10.46, and that would be your property tax rate. So how do those taxes create dollars for us? In the general fund levy, um, it's a, it's a three-step program, and the numbers have actually changed slightly. The universal levy is still $5.40. Every school district levy is at $5.40 as the base of what they're going to generate for their budget for that year. Next, to get up to the foundation level, the state puts their supplemental aid in. This number used to be 87.5% of the total, now it's 88.4% of the total. So in order to create a little bit of relief on property taxes, they raised the amount of state supplemental aid, um, how much of the package it provides, so you have 540 and a little more SSA, then the combined district cost, or what is your, um, uh, what is your district cost for the year, uh, the remaining 11.6% is levied in property taxes. So, we don't know what that property tax level at the top's gonna be until we know what state supplemental aid's gonna be for the next year, and then we have our valuations and come up with the levy. So, we know how much money we're going to get based on how many kids we have. So we know how much money we're going to get based on how many kids we have in the school funding formula, which is simply taking the amount of students you have on certified enrollment times the district cost per pupil for that fiscal year. And certified enrollment runs a year behind. So this year's enrollment that was taken October first was six eighty-nine point six eighty-nine point oh three. The new district cost per pupil, because we got the three percent increase in state supplemental aid, the new number for next year is going to be seven thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars per pupil. So you multiply those numbers and it generates five million two hundred sixty dollars, two hundred sixty thousand dollars for the general fund. So again, property tax is calculated starting with the five dollar and forty cent universal levy. You add the SSA up to make up eighty-eight point four percent of that five million dollar number. And then the last eleven point six is what's left over and they figure in property tax. The management fund levy has, you can, the district can set this amount and how much they want to levy for. But it pays for things like the district's property insurance, breakdown insurance, anything that's electrical in nature can be, we can have it fixed, and then breakdown insurance pays for the cost. So if we didn't have breakdown insurance, we'd just, we'd be spending a lot more money out of the general fund to pay for those repairs. Early retirement packages, which we haven't had for a couple of years, but that gets paid out of the management fund also. So when we set the management fund, we have to set it knowing that we're generating enough funding to cover the cost of these things for the year coming up. Physical plant equipment levy, this is the thirty-three cents that the board can approve. And so we levy the thirty-three cents on property tax, does not require voter approval. The voted PEPAL, if you want to go above thirty-three cents, then you have to take that to to a ballot and have the voters vote on it. You can go up to a doll, up to a dollar thirty-four on the voted PEPAL for a total of a dollar sixty-seven. We right now are at sixty-seven cents on the voted PEPAL. That's what the district approved back in two thousand sixteen. So it's at sixty-seven cents. It expires in two thousand twenty-six. So that we've talked about before, how if you have a vote ahead of time, you can extend, get the money for the rest and extend. It can run out. You can make it take over right on time. Just depends on what projects you have coming up and how much money you need to to generate and what the and what the voters will support. Voted PEPAL is also funded by income surtax. So as you'll see later, the voted PEPAL does not show up on property taxes sixty-seven cents. It shows up as less because the income surtax pays a portion of that. So again, the property tax rate is created by the the general fund, five dollar and forty cent uniform levy, and then the final eleven point six percent. Then you add the PEPAL and voted PEPAL and the management levy. Those are the four levies that we utilize. So we only control one levy. Again, certified enrollment times district cost per pupil sets the regular program district cost. PEPAL is renewed yearly, the thirty-three cents by the school board. Voted PEPAL is renewed every ten years. And the management levy is set by the district according to the dollar amount needed to meet obligations. Normally, the certified budget has to be set by April fifteenth this year because the fifteenth is on Saturday, April seventeenth is the deadline. And later tonight, we'll we'll try to set a hearing date for the for the certified budget. However, there is legislation pending right now that would extend the deadline to April thirtieth. And part of that is the legislation or the issue that the state has discovered with valuations, that they were too high. And so they're going to have to fix that, which is going to adjust our budgets. So that's right now Senate File One Eighty-One. It does have to be fixed, so we're just waiting for that to happen. More than likely, it would affect our PEPAL funds. And then, once they fix that, they are looking to, they are talking about extending the deadline to April thirtieth to file the certified budget. Other legislation that would affect, could affect property tax, HF one has a provision that would lower the foundation levy by fifty cents down to four ninety. If that passed, it would put more burden on the state supplemental aid to get districts to their combined district cost, which I I don't know how that right now is going to affect the property rates at all, because even if you drop it fifty cents on the on the front side, where are they going to make up the difference to get you to the funding formula? And so that's either going to be state aid or property tax on the back end. So they haven't really laid that out yet. Still waiting to see. Also, the three percent increase was signed by the governor, and so state supplemental aid will increase by three percent. That was figured into the the calculations earlier. This will not be enough to prevent property taxes going up to cover the last eleven point six of the combined district cost. We would have had it, had to have had at least five percent increase in SSA to not kick in a property tax increase. So. Our historical tax rates, you can see back six years through the current year. And each year, the taxes have gone down, except for the last two, excuse me, the last three have remained pretty constant. So you can see in there, the general, the general fund levy, that's gone down as student enrollment has gone down. Because you don't have as many kids, you're not going to generate as much cost, and so the rate goes down a little bit. You can see the thirty-three cent PEPAL. You see the voted PEPAL, and again, that's not at sixty-seven cents because of the income surtax paying a portion of it. And then management. And management fluctuates up and down more than anything because because, again, we use it to cover the expenses in the management fund. Those go up and down from year to year. But it also, with the general fund going up and down, it gives us room to play with the management fund. But you can see, when we don't need as much, we don't levy as much for management. Last year was only fifty-nine cents. This year, it's up to a dollar. It's been around, it's been floating around a dollar average throughout the, if you take out twenty-two. And again, that just helps us cover the expenses that fall under that levy. Any questions?
I think so. Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to new business, consider approval of FFA junior senior trip.
And we have members of the FFA leadership team here with us this evening, and Mr. Rottenghaus, who will present. Just tell me when to click the button, okay?
We're presenting about our junior senior FFA trip. My name is Madison Marco, and I'm currently serving as our president.
I'm Eden Azalea, and I'm the chapter treasurer. So the purpose of the junior senior trip is to further develop our education in some areas.
Meeting with leaders in agriculture and government. While on our tour of the nation's capital, we'll be meeting with government leaders and experts in the industry such as?
We'll be meeting with leaders in the White House, the American Farm Bureau Bureau, and other farming governmental agencies.
Southeastern agriculture. By viewing farming operations in Florida and Kentucky, we will further develop our understanding of the different types of agriculture in various parts of the country.
Our trip will develop any skills like personal qualities and cooperation, friendship among the members, and the development and execution of planning.
Requirements. We have to sell at least fifteen boxes of fruit each year, work annually at the FFA lunchstand, to be good, in good standing with the school, remain active.
Oops, sorry.
Remain active and help with major FFA activities.
Additional requirements for members is that they have no outstanding bills when they go on, and all payments are made in advance. And they have to sign in and turn in a parent permission slips and agree to buy abide by all trip rules. To enforce the rules, they are required to post a five hundred trip bond just cashed out if a member does not abide by the rules.
Expenses. The cost involved with travel and lodging will be the responsibility of the Silvio Cheaton FFA chapter.
The chapter will also cover the costs associated with most of the group tours.
All FFA members are required to put money into a fund before the trip starts. This will be used to defray the cost of all flights and transportation.
FFA members will pay for the cost of their meals, any souvenirs, cleaning of clothing, and other personal expenses that may arise during the trip.
The schedule of our trip. Day one on June twelfth, everyone participating will meet in the egg shop where we will have all the luggage checked before loading the bus. First, we will leave for Omaha at seven thirty AM. Then we will fly from Omaha to Washington DC, lifting off at one PM and planning to land at four thirty PM.
On day two, June thirty-one, we will go to Washington DC sites. Like tour of Mount Vernon, the monument tours, Supreme Court and National Archives we'll go to. Also go to the Holocaust Museum there.
Day three on June fourteenth, we'll tour of Senator Joey Ernst's office, Smithsonian Institution, White House, tour of Arlington Cemetery, tour of the Capitol, tours of other points of interest in Washington DC.
For, when we leave Washington DC, we'll arrive at the airport by five PM and fly from Washington DC to Orlando, Florida at seven PM. We'll arrive in Loran, Orlando around eleven thirty PM.
Day three and four, we'll head to Universal Studios on June fifteen and sixteen.
For day five, June seventeen, we'll go to the Showcase of Citrus Tour. We'll also travel to Musella, VA for Dicky Farms Peach Tour. After, we will travel to Paris, Kentucky.
Day six on June eighteenth, we'll go to the Claribone Farms Tour and possibly meet with the Bourbon County FFA. After, we will leave for St. Louis.
On day seven, June nineteen, we'll explore tours in St. Louis and we'll arrive the airport at noon. From there, we will fly from St. Louis to Minneapolis at three PM, three PM and arrive in Minneapolis at eight PM. Arrive home around midnight.
That's it. Any questions?
How many students will be gone? Twenty-four.
Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you very much. So I would recommend approving the trip as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the FFA junior senior trip as presented.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the FFA junior senior trip. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried. Consider approval of changes to the district calendar.
So the suggested changes were no early out Wednesdays for the rest of the year, extending the school day by thirty minutes, extend teacher contracts by thirty minutes, using flex time for teachers to make up contract days not covered by the extended school day, and add any further missed time to the end of the school year or considered for forgiveness by the school board. Two other requests that I was given. The staff had requested that we do not extend parent-teacher conference days because they're already here from eight to eight. So they'd still like to have that break in the middle of the day. That would be two days. And then I had one other comment from a parent that the extra fifteen minutes would be difficult to impossible for their family to schedule with work and where they have to have the kids during the day. Other than that, I did I did not receive any other comments.
Yeah, other than the one that we read.
Right.
I haven't heard anything either.
That was the only thing that was really talked about it before.
Say that again.
I missed, I missed the first part when they had the open, public hearing. Nothing, I mean, besides that letter, that was it.
I'd also say that when we make it to state basketball and we cancel a day to go down to watch the game, that is not in climate weather. So we can, we can still, you can still decide whether to make that day up or not. But as long as you get to the minimum of the ten eighty, anything over starts to build your bank back up. So you can make those, you can not make those hours up if you don't, if you don't want to do that. But that is another consideration besides weather. So. It would be up, it would be up to the board to decide what, what if any of these options to use. The association did approve extending their contracts by thirty minutes without a change in pay. So they would come at seven forty-five and leave at four fifteen, except for Friday. They leave at three forty-five.
Do we know what other districts are doing? That letter appeared to say that some of the districts around are choosing the day after President's Day or President's Day and the day after Easter.
They are choosing the day after President's Day for some of the districts. We still have that work rules document that has those things in it that's approved by the board. So that would have, my understanding, that would have to be a another memorandum of understanding with the teachers to say we're going to use President's Day.
But I mean, are some of the other districts doing the same things that we're considering adding?
Yes.
Time to the school.
Yes, but not all of them.
Yep, yep.
The fifteen minutes before and after will get us to that minimum?
The fifteen minutes before and after get you, get you past that.
Okay. What will that get us to?
Okay. Okay, so. What document did I have that on, guys?
That one was posted. On my website.
So the fifteen minutes. I believe it's thirty. I believe it was thirty or thirty-two hours. And right now, we have we have twenty-one hours to make up that are required to get to ten eighty.
So that would give us a little cushion.
Plus, you'll get an extra four and a half by not doing the early outs. Or, excuse me, fourteen. By not doing the early outs.
And that, and that wasn't included in the fifteen and fifteen.
Correct. Let's see if I could find that.
So then if you add those two together, you're looking at a total of thirty-two to thirty-five plus the twelve?
Plus fourteen.
Plus fourteen, I mean.
So you'd be forty-eight-ish. And there are sixty-six total right now. So that'll leave you eighteen short of our original count. Hours, yeah. Three days.
Teachers and staff? Comments? Would they rather extend the day by thirty minutes or tack on the days at the end of the school year?
Well, I think that they supported, they supported extending the school day and extending the contract.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to ask the question.
They, they're, the top answers from their survey is what went out to the public. So one of the. So one of the options that was not included was add all the time at the end of the year. Doesn't mean you still can't do it.
Yep.
It just wasn't on the, on the list that went out.
A few people that I talked to, they did not want to go at the end.
I would certainly think an option like this to try and make up as much time as we can. Would be the way to go.
Then you have to decide what you're gonna do with time, any, any new time that we have and what time is left over. So extending the day by fif- by thirty minutes. Plus no early out Wednesday is not gonna get you back to sixty-six, is not gonna get you back to the, where we started the calendar. When we talked in January, that was a goal, was to try to get all the way back to where we started the calendar so we didn't lose any instructional time. So those two by themselves will not get you there. So then we have to decide what to do with any more time that we would have, plus what's left over.
Certainly gets us closer though.
Definitely. And three days, if it takes three days to make up the rest of the hours, that's Friday, Monday, Tuesday. Now, we also talked about how coming back for just two days after the weekend at the end of the year may not be the most productive situation. Um, if we have, so you can still. You know, you don't have to make up those three days because you'll have enough hours banked back up. What do you do if you have any additional time? That's a, that's a concern because if you don't decide that tonight, you have to come back for another hearing, you have to have another, um, board action to change the calendar. So all of those things need to be decided tonight.
But the only thing that we're voting on tonight are these changes to the district calendar.
And, and what you want to do.
If we miss one.
If you miss one.
Okay.
Yep. Cause you're determining then, that is a change. You're determining what's going to happen because we didn't have a plan before.
And this is extending the school, the end of the school year to what date then?
Well, if you're just talking about making up the hours right now, we're still out. On the eighteenth with kids and nineteenth with staff. I think that's the Thursday and Friday.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you, um, wanna get all the way back to sixty-six, then you have to make up the three days and go until the next Tuesday. The twenty-third. And then if we have any more days and you decide to tack them on the end. Then, um, we would keep going on past the twenty-third. Memorial Day is not till the Monday after.
So is our goal as a board still where it was, what was it? Last time we discussed it, to not lose any contact time?
Can I ask how many were in the first semester versus second semester? The days were just.
I could tell you if you give me one second.
I can give you a second.
Oh, yeah. Seven, uh.
We had five, six, seven, the first semester. Kept appearing as I kept looking here, sorry. The twenty-third, our last day of the semester, when we didn't have school, that was day number seven. We've had ten, so then that would mean we've had three in the second semester.
And all of those.
And two of those were the first two when we came back.
And all of those days are six and a half hours unless they were an early out, early start. And second semester is ten days longer than first semester.
So with this now here, our last day would still be May eighteenth then?
Yes. If you didn't, if that's all you did was, was stop there because you could forgive the rest. Then you could still be done May eighteenth. But you would still have to have a caveat to say. We're not gonna make up these three days. But if we have any more. Do we tack them on at the end of the year? You have to make that decision too.
So to clarify from my understanding, if we choose these and that's it, we would be losing contact hours.
Yes. If you didn't add anything on at the end.
Yep.
Which you could make that change if we don't, let's just say we don't have any more snow days, you could, let's just roll this back a week or something like that, right?
Say that again.
So you could move, you know, the end of the school year to like say the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth. I guess to avoid these thirty-day or thirty-minute days or adding it to the school day. By adding a few days on to the end, but we wanna keep those just in case we have more snow days.
Well, you, you could, right. So you could, you could build up what your, whatever you make up builds your bank back up.
Right, but if we don't have any more, then to me, it would make more sense to add. A week on to the, or bump this back down to like the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth and not have an extra half hour days, I guess.
So then what, what you'd be proposing?
We. Add on to our Wednesdays to get the fourteen hours that gives us. Two days made up.
Two and a half or two or more.
Mm-hmm.
Put a few on the end and. See where we.
Okay, so.
Just so we can.
You're saying just the Wednesdays?
Yeah, just so we can get some of it off before, but. Just a thought.
So if we did the Wednesdays only. And we wouldn't plan to start that until February twenty-second? To everybody, to give everybody a week to get adjusted? I mean, if we were gonna do the, if we were just gonna do the no early out on Wednesday, we could start that Wednesday. But if we, if we had time in the day, I was going to recommend that we wait until the twenty-first to start that. So one, two, seven, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, so fourteen. So you get fourteen hours there. Um. From sixty-six, you use fifty-two. Fifty-two divided by six and a half. Is, uh, seven, seven and a half days that you still have to make up. So then, um. If you wanted to add more days at the end. Um. In May. So then the kids are, are out on the eighteenth now. You could run them through the twenty-sixth, then you'd have six, or the twenty-fifth, and you'd make five days up. And then have the staff done on the twenty-sixth, that Friday. Otherwise, you're coming back after Memorial Day. So that would add five days and you'd really only be missing about two days.
That's if we don't have any more.
That's if you don't have any more and you could.
But at that point, I guess.
At that point, you're, you're banking up, seven times six and a half is fifty-two hours. You could still have seven more days missed, which is not realistic. Possible, but unlikely.
Well, I think if you did that, I, it, you know, doing this extra half hour maybe is a last resort type scenario. If you were, all of a sudden had a bunch of snow days here, then we'd look at, boy, we better do something here in April or. You know, it gives you some flexibility, I guess.
Right. So if you start with the, um, no early out Wednesday.
It'd get you fourteen.
Then, um, add. Add five full days at the end. So new last day is the May twenty-fifth. And May twenty-sixth for teachers. Then you are, um. You, then you need that contingency plan of what you're going to do. If we miss more days, are we gonna use the hours that we've built back up and eat those? Are we gonna go pass Memorial?
Cause the option of having another public hearing to change the calendar to add thirty minutes to the day, I guess that would be an option.
Well, you can say that tonight if you want to, if you get to the point to where we're going to be below hours again or wherever you wanna set that level.
Okay.
We, we would add thirty minutes to the calendar starting on such and such a date to make up.
Mm-hmm.
The time.
That's, I, I guess my thoughts are.
I don't think there's a question of whether we have to get the hours made up somehow, you know? Think people are saying, just cut it short. So I guess I'm kind of in agreement with Jamie. Let's go ahead and do it with the five days. Do the Wednesday early outs. And then if we miss any more days, extend the school day as a last resort.
Mm-hmm.
You'll probably have to be more specific than that, but.
Well, what if we say we miss two more snow days, that triggers in a month of, or whatever we think we need for hours, I guess. That triggers, two more snow days triggers, uh.
Well, you need thirteen hours and you get thirty minutes a day, so you need twenty-six days to pull that off.
Well, I mean, two snow days triggers, an extra thirty minutes.
Starting.
After the snow days, I guess.
If we do the Wednesdays and through the twenty-fifth, how many hours do we have to forgive?
If we, I'm sorry, say that again.
If we would do the Wednesdays.
Yeah.
And through the twenty-fifth, how many hours does that give us to forgive? Does that give us?
We were two days short.
Two days.
Yeah, thirteen.
So we could have two days to forgive and anything additional, we make up.
You would already be forgiving two days.
Two days.
Cause we've missed nine. So if we did the Wednesdays plus the five extra days, that would be making up seven. You understand, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So we'd be giving, forgiving two.
Over the one eighty, if we, if we do the Wednes- no Wednesday early out and the five days, then how many hours over the one eighty? One thousand eighty are we?
Uh, five. Uh, plus the fourteen. Forty-six. Are you taking a picture of me doing math for twenty-one? Okay. Okay. Well, I got a twenty-one, so take twenty-one away from that. Uh, twenty-five hours, twenty-five and a half hours.
Twenty-five over, over the ten eighty.
Yeah.
So that gives you four.
Two days. Not quite two days.
Well, six and a half times four.
Oh, yeah, four.
Almost four. You could potentially have four more snow days.
Before you had to have to add time back to the end of the calendar. Which we're not going to have to.
What about state basketball? That would include.
You could still, you could still use the hours for state basketball. So state basketball would be the same as a snow day if we cancel school. We could use the hours to, we could use hours.
What about the other?
Can you, can you just do that and then say any, somehow any additional days over four would be.
Added to the end of the year.
Can you say some word, something like that?
Sure.
That would take us past Memorial Day.
Yes. Um.
So you're not really in favor of adding the Wednesday, or thirty minutes?
Yeah, not if you don't have to.
Any more than four days.
I guess that would be, I mean, I'd use that as your last ditch effort, I guess, or to, or your last option to.
Well, what I'm hearing tonight is that we're not, we're okay with losing contact hours. Which we were not a while back.
Right now, it'd be two days, right?
Yep. It would be two days up to four if we had more.
Mm-hmm.
And the other thing you could come back and do too, if you really got in a bind, let's say we had a two-hour early dismissal and so that put us one hour short. You could come back and have a hearing and a meeting and add thirty minutes to a day to be legal.
Well, we wanna make sure that we are.
Right. So, I mean, at that point, you'd only have to do it to a couple of days instead of.
I guess I would like to try that, I guess, just to see, you know, maybe we won't have any more snow days, but.
Okay.
So what was, go back to what the teachers were thinking.
About?
About the adding on?
Lengthening of the day.
Yeah.
They were.
They were in favor of that?
Yes. But if, if the board is going to set it up so that we don't have to add that time back. And we're, and we're satisfied with, we're gonna make up enough time, then we don't have to do that. I'm sure they're not gonna argue with not having to do.
Okay.
Because that, I mean, it's another hour for them.
Right.
And I do think it's, when you're in elementary, these extra half hours could be, it's, can be a lot, I guess, with schedules and routines and.
Yeah, I'm kind of wondering how that. Extra half hour, you know, where do you stick it? You add a few minutes on each one? I mean, I, I mean. I know we got the schedule for like high school and middle school.
Mm-hmm.
But like Kent for elementary.
Said they were going to just add on time to, they would add lessons and fill the time.
Okay.
Instead of changing because they're on such a mixed.
Yeah.
With schedule.
With specials and all that kinda stuff. Yep. Yep.
I think the staff was okay with the, would be okay ending it May twenty-fifth rather than having to go all the way through June second.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah. They would be okay with that.
That would be much more.
I, I would prefer us being done by Memorial Day. Definitely.
Right.
I didn't know if that's what they were thinking. I'd rather extend the day than go into June where it's a better option to end May twenty-five than.
Right.
You know, that they would prefer that over the extended day.
Teacher over five years of experience has experienced before, just not in the last three years.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so right now, we have no early out Wednesdays for the rest of the year. Any more than four days missed following this meeting will be added at the end of the year. And the new last day for students is May twenty-fifth and the teachers are twenty-sixth. That's where I'm hearing you saying you're.
Comments, questions? I'm still going back and forth a little bit as to whether the staff and teachers would rather add thirty minutes a day. Rather than go to the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth. And I can see pros and cons. I know it's only fifteen minutes before and fifteen minutes after, but. I do still remember having to get kids to school and fifteen minutes can be a chore.
Mm-hmm.
And plus you add to the fact. I think it was mentioned in that letter, what. What type of adding fifteen minutes to a class, what does that really do? Is there benefit to it or not? I'm assuming there is, but some people would have probably argued that.
Well, and when you're talking at the elementary fifteen minutes, if they're covering another lesson or if they're doing more intervention or whatever. In the middle school and high school on the rigid bell schedule, you're adding two minutes of class. So you're not, you're adding fifteen minutes, but you're distributing it throughout the day.
Yep. To me, if it were me, I'd rather add the thirty minutes to go till the twenty-fifth. But I certainly understand both sides of it.
I think the bottom line is we've gotta figure out what's best for our students. Um, we're not gonna make everybody happy. There's just too many opinions on it.
Um, we're not gonna make everybody happy. There's just too many opinions on it, so I think we've gotta. Look at mainly what's best for our students, so. I know sometimes in the second semester, we have things like field day and, um, field trips and things like that. And I know some of those, like the circus and that are kind of set dates, but. Um, those being more towards that. Last couple of weeks, if they could be scheduled then, I know that's the concern, is that it's hard to keep kids engaged. It is. It's nice outside. But, I don't know if those would be possibilities, you know, can, do they have those scheduled already?
Some of them are.
Some of them are.
Mm-hmm. Some of them are.
Yeah.
And there was, and there was some agreement too, that we'd much rather come back for a week.
Than one or two days.
To have the most chance at structure, rather than two days when you're just really trying to get through.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so.
So you're not concerned about going till the twenty-fifth?
No.
Okay.
Still out before Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not advocating for this, but I'm saying, I think it would be easier to go to the twenty-fifth than even the twenty-second, is what he's saying. Cause you'd come back for that one day, and it's.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'm not saying, I'm just saying, like, that's just, cause you know you have stuff to do for the week, versus everyone's like, one day?
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's hard.
Okay. All right. Jamie, are you ready to make a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
Like, I got this right?
I would make a motion to extend the end of the school year to May twenty-fifth. Uh, doing away with, or, what'd you say, doing away with the PDE Development Day, and adding the student contact hours to that. And if we have any more additional snow days, we take a look at adding those, uh, to the end of the school year. Am I correct?
After four.
After four, sorry, after four.
We're gonna add that to the school year, or were you thinking about doing that?
Well, we could always come back and say, hey, we, let's, let's take a look at the thirty minutes. That's always an option too, so, right?
And if you, and if, um, you've already said you're gonna add them after four and the end of the school year, so that takes care of that.
Yeah, but we could make an adjustment though, right?
It's still the thirty minutes.
Right. To get past, you know, that, when we're not going past Memorial Day, we could make an adjustment, you know?
We just have to have another public hearing and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I, I like that, so.
Is everybody on board with that motion and know exactly what it is?
So, to, adding days to the twenty-fifth, which would be five more days?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And no early out.
No, no, no early outs.
Well, it would be, it's six for students.
With that?
It's six for, or no, I'm sorry, yes, five for students, five for staff.
Six, six. Six for staff? Take a one more, right?
Well, they, I think, they already were going.
Oh, they were going one more, okay.
All right, would there be a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, let me see if I can repeat it. No more early out Wednesdays. Um, extend the school year till the twenty-fifth. And if we have more than four days missed between now and the end of the school year, add them to the end of. Add those on at the end of the school. Is that? What everybody's hearing?
Yeah.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried.
And I will, um, get those updates done and, and start disseminating that information tomorrow. We'll keep people in the loop, um, through the week, try to put that out as much as we can.
Okay.
Um, especially with, uh, since we're not adding the thirty minutes, um, we'll just do the, um. We'll just do the, um. The PD, we'll give it a P-Day Wednesday, and we can start that Wednesday.
Okay, and that covered everything that we needed to. Cover, um.
For letter B.
Yep. Okay. All right, moving on to C. Consider approval of forgiving missed time for seniors.
So Board Policy six oh one point one states that the board may also excuse graduating seniors from making up days missed due to inclination. Whether the student has met the school district's graduation requirements. So, there's ten days to make up, and if you change, if you want the seniors to make days up, you have two options. Either move graduation, and everybody's got their invitations pretty much sent or in.
Not an option.
Or, um, don't give them a diploma graduation and have them come back and make up the days. And then give them a diploma after they graduate. They can still have graduation on the same day, they just won't get their diploma, and they'll have to come back for the days that we missed.
I would suggest that you would be the only board in the history of public school to, um, do that, but. You have to make, I.
I think the key thing here is that if the student has met the school district's graduation requirements, so.
And if they're not gonna make the requirements, they're not gonna graduate.
Right.
Right. Those extra days aren't gonna matter.
I would recommend forgiving the days for seniors.
I move to approve the forgiving of missed time for seniors.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the forgiving of missed time for our seniors. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried. All right, item D. Consider approval of resolution to approve lease with Bright Beginnings of Osceola County.
So this is the lease that we had the public hearing on. Because Bright Beginnings of Osceola County is now its own private entity. The lease has to be between the school and Bright Beginnings, instead of the school and the hospital. So, we have to have a new lease. Um, the original lease was for ninety-nine years, um, for a dollar. Um, we would be restarting the lease for ninety-nine years with Bright Beginnings, um, and, um. Otherwise, the terms are the same. So, really, we're just changing the name and restarting the. We're about twenty years in on the first ninety-nine, so we just restart the ninety-nine. I'd recommend approving the lease.
Would there be a motion?
I move to approve the lease for Bright Beginning.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution to approve the lease with Bright Beginnings of Osceola County. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried. Consider approval of operational sharing agreements.
All right, so, um, Transportation Director has been shared with Harris Lake Park. Uh, both districts are interested in continuing the sharing agreement. It's working very well. Amos loves it, he's having a great time. And, um, we both receive, um, four students' worth of operational sharing funding. And Harris Lake Park pays for one-fifth of the Transportation Director's salary and benefits. I'd recommend continuing the sharing agreement.
Make a motion to continue the sharing agreement for Transportation Director with Harris Lake Park.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the operational sharing agreement of our Transportation Director with Harris Lake Park. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried. Human Resources Director.
Chrissy Ackerman was shared in this position this year with Harris Lake Park and Emmitsburg. All three districts are interested in continuing the sharing agreement. Again, we receive four students' worth of operational sharing funding, and, uh, the salary is split, uh, equally with the three districts, thirty-three percent apiece. I recommend continuing to share the Human Resources Director with Harris Lake Park and Emmitsburg.
I'll make a motion to continue the sharing Human Resources Director with Harris Lake Park and Emmitsburg.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the sharing agreement of our Human Resources Director with Harris Lake Park and Emmitsburg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried. Moving down to Maintenance Director.
Greg Greenfield has been shared with George Little Rock. Both districts are interested in continuing the sharing agreement. Again, we get four students' worth of operational sharing funding for both districts. And George Little Rock pays for one-fifth of the Maintenance Director's salary and benefits. I recommend continuing the agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the sharing agreement with George Little Rock for the Maintenance Director.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the sharing agreement of the ma- Maintenance Director with George Little Rock. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried. Item F. Set date for public hearing on certified budget.
So normally, we have the, the public hearing a week before, a week prior to the regular board meeting. Um, and we have moved the regular board meeting up to a week prior in the past. Um, we're not sure, we're fairly certain. Um, that the deadline is gonna get extended to April thirtieth because of the state legislation. But again, if they don't get it fixed, and it doesn't pass, then we don't wanna get stuck, you know, so. I'm so recommending that we, that we have the public hearing for the certified budget on April eleventh. But it would be up to the board if you wanna move the whole board meeting up to that date, or if you just wanna, um, leave the, leave the regular meeting on the eighteenth. We would have to, we would have to approve the certified budget prior to April fifteenth to get it set in, if they don't change the legislation, so you aren't kinda riding a tight.
So I have April eleventh as a, is that a Tuesday?
Yes, Mondays, Monday after Easter.
Monday's the tenth, yeah, day after Easter, so.
So our regular board meeting then would be on the Tuesday?
The tw- the eleventh.
April eleventh?
Does that affect you at all, getting things ready? Or does that affect you at all, moving it up a week?
We're just setting the. We're just setting the date for the public hearing to, we have to move the meeting separately anyway.
Oh, okay.
I would like to have it earlier, to have the week to get it submitted to the courthouse.
So if we have the public hearing on Monday the eleventh, or on Tuesday the eleventh, and what did you think in there?
Yeah.
Then just leave the regular board meeting the eighteenth?
No, it's fine to move that too, if you, if you want to. We just don't, we'll have to do that separately.
We can do that in March, yeah, I, yeah, I see.
I'll make a motion to move the April. Uh, certified budget meeting to April eighteen, eleventh, April eleventh.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to set the date for the public hearing on the certified budget to Tuesday, April eleventh, at five thirty. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried. Item G. Consider approval of fund transfer.
So when the state of Iowa sends income surtax revenue for voted pebble, they send the money to the general fund account, and we need to transfer that money. Out of the general fund into the pebble account, and the amount of transfers fifty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents. And I recommend you approve this fund transfer.
And please mention the fund, the amount of the transfer in your motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer from the pebble, or to the pebble from the general fund, in the amount of fifty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the fund transfer of fifty-five thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and twenty-five cents from the general fund to the pebble account. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried. Um. Any open and home and in? Okay. Consider approval of resignations.
We have two on the agenda. J.C. Goodell from Agriculture Education, Zadie Brauner as parent educator. I recommend approving the resignations.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignations as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resignations as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried. Uh, item J. Consider approval of new contracts.
So we have Mike McCarty for head, uh, boys' high school track coach, Carter Norgard for eighth grade baseball, and Creighton Cosgrove for seventh grade baseball. Ashley, uh, Genshore for parent educator, and Arlie Barahona for food service. And I am pleased to announce that the food service department is now full, so we don't have to advertise for food service anymore. Um, and our custodial staff is full, and our parent educators, I believe we are half a parent educator short still. And that's all we have left to fill. So, really excited to finally be there. I recommend approving the new, new contracts as presented.
I move to approve the contracts as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the new contracts as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same. Motion carried.
Are we gonna take a break?
Let's take a break.
Yeah. So. Just take five minutes.
Yeah.
No.